Okay, first item is citizens wishing to address the board is on something other than what's on committee because you'll get to talk about it then. Is there anybody wants to say anything? Okay, hearing none. Nobody has a speaking role tonight? Yes or no? I don't see any.
That doesn't look like it.
What's that? Okay, all right. Then next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through C? Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, motion of second. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Motion carries. Uh, any unfinished business? No? Okay, new business of communication?
Good evening. Staff was recently contacted by a surviving family member of Stephen Sullivan, who recently passed in Florida. Stephen Sullivan was the son of John Sullivan and Dolores Sullivan. Many may know and recognize the name Dolores Sullivan as a name on the Vernon Hills Park District Facility on Aspen. Many may also recognize the name John Sullivan, who served as trustee from 1967 to 1969, and as a sixth village president from 1969 to 1981. Staff learned that when family members were sorting through possessions at the Sullivan residence in Florida, they located this ceremonial shovel, which was found, and it had the following engraved on it: "Groundbreaking, November 5th, 1971, John T. Sullivan, New Century Town." This piece of memorabilia and the NCT groundbreaking event were said to be treasured by former village president Sullivan, as he knew this was a significant moment in the development of Vernon Hills. The family was kind enough to call village staff to share the story and transport the shovel back from Florida to Vernon Hills, so it could be shared with the community in place with the other ceremonial shovels, which include Hawthorne Center, Melody Farm, the Victory Center, and many of our subdivisions. As we have Centennial tonight, also talking about a huge moment for the future of Vernon Hills, we just thought this would be an exciting piece of history to share with the board and community, that we thought you would find it very interesting. I will place the shovel with the other ceremonial shovels after the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody have any comments or questions about that? Okay, any other new business or communication?
Yes, if I would.
Sure. Trustee Markwart?
Wanted to find out, a resident was watching a gentleman go out on the lake by the fire station, and he was ice fishing. And he was questioning me about, do we have signs up? I have to admit, I know we've seen signs. I know the park district used to have a flag that would go up, and it would tell you it had the color red and green, which would, you couldn't go on the ice, or you could go on the ice. I believe they don't do that anymore. But do we have signs on all our ponds or lakes, however they're phrased?
I guess, I think the lake you're talking about by the fire stations is called Firethorn Lake. You are correct, that is a park district lake. I know the park district does have a policy as far as the usage of the lake, but I don't know how it pertains in terms of thickness of ice and that part of it. I know village staff, we've been looking at a policy to present to the board in terms of the use of our lakes, more notably like Harvey Lake. We were out there the last couple of weeks making improvements there. We did see a couple of 20-year-olds out ice fishing. My staff did check with them, and it sounds like the ice was three inches thick. But I think where I'm headed with this is, there is a policy that we have drafted. Staff will spend some time on it, and we'd like to present it for approval by the village board. And then we can move forward with the signage and everything that's appropriate.
Thank you. I will convey that.
Would this policy make it illegal to ice fish no matter, basically, no trespassing when there's ice on the lake? Or is it a conditional?
The, the policy certainly will present it to the board, and you'll give me direction on what you'd like to see. But I think our intent right now is, what type of fish and what can be pulled out of the lake? Do you need a fishing license or not? And working with, through those, those issues. We, we will allow some types of fish to be pulled out of the lake, but there's certainly some game fish that we want to remain in the lake.
So my, my concern would be more people falling through the ice. That's where...
There will be, there will be safety, safety provisions as part of that ordinance, too.
And that was the situation with the resident. He was worried about the current flows from, I think, the west to the east, and when water moves, the buildup of ice is lessened. So a possibility of falling through, and his comment was in regards that here this person's fishing, kids see him go on the ice, what is our protection? So, or protection for them?
Points well, points well taken. I know the manager's office was contacted the previous winter in Centennial Crossing, that some people had some concerns about that. And so that's why we started to draft that policy. But we do owe it to the board to present that.
Okay. Thank you.
And may I add, maybe we should look and see what other local communities are doing as well. I don't know if, if they're allowing people to ice fish and, and how they handle that.
Good point. We'll make sure to outreach to them. Mostly, we've talked with the park district, but we should broaden our, our net, so to speak.
Anything else? I had one I, I contacted manager Timmy about. I had a person contact me the other day. One of their neighbors was having a problem. It was two seniors, and neither of them, for whatever reason, could leave their, their home, and they needed some bottled water and that. And she was one of their neighbors, and she wasn't able to get it for them. And she was calling around trying to find some source that could get bottled water and bring it to these people, and, you know, take it up to their apartment, which was up several flights of stairs. And I, apparently, she had no luck connecting with anybody, and I was wondering if we had, you know, some way to connect either the village or the township or that, and, and connect people with, because I know there's always people out there willing to help.
Yeah, we, Trustee Cook, we did look into this a little bit before the meeting. So Lake County does offer a 2-on-1 service, which is a, pretty much a helpline you can contact for various sorts of resources to assist in these types of situations. So I know that access to food and that type of assistance is one of the services that they provide. I'm also aware of, I believe, some social services I think we might have through the police department, where if, if there's a specific case that we can look into and possibly connect somebody with resources, that's another option. So haven't had a chance yet to connect with Vernon Township or Libertyville Township to see what they offer at their level, but I know that the 2-on-1 system is a good opportunity.
So then 2-on-1 probably then sends somebody out that can do errands for somebody like that in a situation, or?
Yeah, it would put somebody in touch with a number of other charitable or nonprofit organizations in the county that, that can assist. Chief, I'm not sure if you're, if you've got more experience with the 2-on-1.
Yeah, I think that's well put. It, it is a, a central depository of all kinds of social service providers, both public governmental and non, or private charities, that can help target. I mean, they have, they have a ton of different resources. So when, it is one of the first places we direct people to, and we're not quite certain how to solve it, and we've had real good luck getting people. So shameless plug, Lake County 2-on-1, it's been operational for about, I want to say going on two years now. It's a wonderful resource just for this type of thing. When a resident is having trouble and they don't know where else to go, you know, something like this food or, or bottle, whatever, there's someone to answer that phone 24/7 and kind of help them talk through what the right resource is.
And, and we offer, either through police or fire department, do, do we offer follow-up services, like, not just Life Alert, but anybody could sign up for periodic wellness checks or anything like that? I mean...
Not really periodic wellness checks.
No?
That's not, that's not...
But is, is there that same kind of follow-up with like Life Alert and that?
I guess I don't really understand what...
I don't know.
Well...
Yes, if Life Alert calls us, we will do a well-being check.
Um, some, some departments and some fire departments, and I'll, I'll try to get more specifics for you, but they do a, like, a regular series of follow-ups, and people can sign up for a, you know, a...
Wellness check?
I'm, I'm aware of what you're talking about. There are, some communities have found it worthwhile to have a standing calling. People can sign up for this service.
Yeah.
And basically, they have to contact, say, a, a check-in service on a frequency, daily, weekly, whatever. And if, if not, then that prompts a follow-up to say, why haven't you checked in?
Yeah, that's...
I know some communities have done that. I have not, I've not been made aware that that's a concern in our community, or something that there would be much, you know, a significant need for.
Well, I just think in the last year or so, and with us expanding our 55 and over housing and that, that senior, you know, more senior problems like that, I've started to hear more stories about that kind of thing, and I thought it might be something we'd want to look into. Because I believe Gurnee is one of the communities, I was told, does that sort of a service. I'll have to double check.
We, we can do a little bit of looking into that, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I will. I'll get to my source and get back to you on it then.
Thank you.
In regards to 2-on-1, can the village put it like on the marquee or on their website, links to 2-on-1, what that service offers? Because it seems like it's a very valuable service to many of our community members. Is that something we can look into, just to help promote?
Absolutely. And, and actually, we may already have something like that on there. I'm not sure. But absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to mention to the community that starting today, if you go to USPS.com, you can order four free home COVID tests per household. And it just seems like something that people should take advantage of, from a convenience standpoint, and just with everything going on. That opened up today federally, and it would be a, a good resource for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's backslash COVID test, but it, it comes up and you can, it's very easy. It's a one-page form, your name, your address, and it's very clear that you can get four free per resident.
I don't know.
So you can't sign up everybody in your household, but you can get four.
And the website again was?
USPS.com. I believe it's backslash COVID test. And they, they said, I did it today, and it said that they would start shipping them out toward the end of January. And you give an email, and it tells you when, when your tests are coming, so you can kind of keep an eye out for it.
Yeah, I think also, isn't there also covidtests.gov? I think is another...
Yeah.
...potential website that people can, yeah.
I, I got it through my work today, and they encouraged everybody to do it, and I thought it was great.
I know you can pick up four, four kits per, per household.
Yep. I just, yep, you're right. And it's, it's three questions to fill out, very easy. And it says, one, limit one order per residential address. Order will include four individual rapid antigen COVID tests. Free shipping starts end of January.
Yeah, the covidtests.gov link links it to the USPS, yeah.
Oh, it links it right to it. Okay, I see. Yeah, I see. It does. It links it right to it. Okay.
Is this under new business to have, or citizen...
Yeah, this is, no, this is new business communication. Next thing's adjournment, so we're right there.
So we're...
You want to keep going? I mean, jump into the frame?
No, go ahead, jump in. I think...
Why don't we just motion to terminate the designation of trustee Cook as president pro temp?
Okay.
Can somebody make that motion?
I have the motion to...
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I say aye?
I'm not sure I like the use of the word terminate trustee Cook.
I don't like, that's why, that's why I paused. I...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just the phrase terminate trustee Cook doesn't...
No, 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 no. But, but you missed the as. You missed the as part.
Terminate the designation, that's all. But when a doctor says anything like terminate, people take it to heart.
Scary there for me.
Doctor Oppenheim. Now, I got a question. Is, is this, are we still under anything?
New business communication.
Okay. I, I, I have a question for a 20-month-year-old, you know, a grandson, not to put you under any pressure, but can they swab them?
Sure.
You're, that's what you're doing. You swab them?
Sure, sure. Even in, even in the hospital for newborns, born to COVID-positive mothers, we swab the, the newborns.
That's what my daughter like, you know. Call your pediatrician, you know.
Yeah.
Get your money's worth, you know?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then how about, you know, if the kid can spit? Not to my, I don't think he can, but could they do it that way, too?
Cheers to the nose.
Swab them?
Yeah, that, they're, they're still...
I don't know, do you want to through the nose? It's easier for a kid, right?
No, no.
Swab. The little guys?
In the nose. It's easier in the nose.
Oh, even for a 20-month-old?
Even for a one-day-old.
Okay.
You catch them by surprise.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, that's insightful. Okay, I appreciate it.
Happy to apply.
Okay. Any other new business to come before the board? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go into committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka? President Byrne?
Aye. Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order, and let's see what the first item is here. It's approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second. Comments, questions, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka? President Byrne?
Aye. Okay. First item is Apple Orchard, 1101 South Milwaukee Avenue. Consideration of report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of a variation from the sign code. Mike Yackton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And specifically, the variation is to allow the display of six tenant panels rather than the maximum number of one, as permitted by the sign code. The sign on the screen in front of you is what's proposed. It would comply with all other requirements of the sign code. It's less than eight feet in height above grade. The sign panel itself is 50 square feet, and the setback would be 10 feet from the property line. The brick and sill match the brick and sill material that's on the existing building as well. This next slide in red shows where the proposed location is. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing regarding this matter on December 15th, and the commission was generally supportive of the sign as proposed, but they did request that it be centered on the landscape island of the parking lot. It's shown on the screen in front of you. This plan that's shown to you is the location that's being recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff did receive written correspondence from a resident at Georgetown Square, which is across the street from this property, expressing concern regarding lighting. And then two additional residents, each of whom live in Lincolnshire, on the east side of Milwaukee Avenue, attended the hearing and expressed concern regarding sign illumination and the potential sightline obstruction at the intersection of Apple Orchard Lane, which is to the north of this property and Milwaukee Avenue. In response to these concerns, to the concern regarding illumination, the commission determined that lighting would not create a nuisance, because the signed lettering would be made of a translucent white material with an opaque tan backer panel. So only the individual lettering, I'll go back to the, only the individual lettering would be illuminated, and that would be low-lit LED illumination, internally illuminated. The, the commission did recommend a condition be added that requires lighting be turned off at the time when the last business closes, or 10:00 PM, whichever is later. And that condition has been included as condition number five in the report attached to your packet. In response to concerns regarding sightline obstructions at the intersection of Apple Orchard Road and Milwaukee Avenue, the commission determined that an obstruction does not exist, because the sign would be located approximately 180 feet south of the intersection. We also had the petitioner mark the sign location after the public hearing, so that we could, I can go out and visualize it. The residents were also aware of that, so they also had an opportunity to see where the sign would be located. We haven't received any comments in, after that. So on a vote of four in favor and one against, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of a variation from the sign code, allowing a ground-mounted sign to display six tenant panels. For tonight, if the COW concurs with the planning and zoning recommendation, and feels the variation is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the variation, subject to the conditions in the report that's attached to your packet, and also in accordance with the plans that are presented to you tonight. And the petitioner is here to answer any questions that you may have.
And who's the petitioner?
Matt Alaska from North Shore Sign.
Oh, okay. Okay. I know your father.
Dwayne's kid, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's nice. All right, say hello to him, blah, 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 your uncle Kevin.
I got you.
All right. Okay, any comments or questions from...
Where are you pulling the power from, under the drive?
The power will be supplied by the customer. We're going to pull it, how do I get, oh, right there, where it's on that island. You can see, right next to the red X, it's got the light pole right there. That's where we're going to be pulling from. And then when the cus, the customer is going to be supplying the pole and the masonry foundation, they're going to pull that power right into there. So when we do the sign, we're just putting it on, hook it up, that's it.
So that's their parking lot?
Yes.
So it's on the same circuit?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for anybody?
Don't see a problem.
Motion, yeah, motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving the sign variation, subject to the conditions.
Okay, sec, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a second. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka? President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hawthorne Middle School South, 60 North Aspen Drive. Are you folks here?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to come up to the presentation altar, or? And Mike, do you want to say a few words as they gather?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the, the plan should be loading up on the screen shortly. There they are.
Okay.
The aerial view shows the school as it is now, just immediately south of the residential portion of Aspen Point.
Yeah.
The addition is shown in, I guess it's red on the left-of-your-screen. It would be located off of the northwest corner of the building.
Yeah.
The new space would accommodate a band room, along with ancillary space that includes offices, practice rooms, and storage rooms. You'll note on the screen in front of you there's, and the board doesn't need to act on this, but they're also doing a, a number of remodeling projects within the existing building itself, that would update and create additional administrative offices and locker rooms, along with STEM classrooms, and additional meeting spaces. This is the view from the northwest corner of the, of the property. You can see the addition immediately in front of you. Note that the split-faced block matches the existing, along with the, the brick itself, the dimensional brick. This is from the same view, but at ground level. And then this is from the southwest corner of the building. And then another view at ground level.
And the water in the back is what, Lake Michigan, or, or is Tom with, you got the line, Tom?
It's the, yeah.
Too Much?
I think it's Harvey Lake.
No, that's actually, that would actually be behind us. Yeah, that would be back where the camera is.
Okay.
Yeah, Lake Toomachago. Yeah, that would be back where the cameras.
Okay.
So that's, so this is the western side of the building?
South, southwest corner.
I like the birds in the last one.
It's a music addition.
You see how the birds land, and then a short-haired German terrier chasing them? Hey, digress. All right. Okay, well, what, what, I mean, what issues are here? Are we satisfied with the, you know, the, the, the plan itself, the utilities, the stormwater runoff? The, do we have to do anything with Aspen, Dave, you know, to facilitate getting in and out of here?
The, we've worked very well with the school district and their team in terms of the permits. We've worked through the stormwater. The majority of the stormwater issues were resolved as part of a prior project. So stormwater, good. Traffic, we have an understanding of how much traffic's there. This isn't going to substantially impact Aspen Drive noticeably. So we're supportive of it.
Yeah, okay.
I would add that the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing on December 15th. And at that meeting, there were really no comments that resulted in any changes to the plan, nor resulted in any conditions added to the overall approval. And on a vote of five in favor and zero against, the commission recommended approval to amend ordinance 2003-040, authorizing revisions to a special use permit for plan unit development, allowing the addition. And on the same unanimous vote, five in favor and zero against, they recommend approval of the site plan, landscape plan, and architectural drawings. So tonight, if the COW concurs with the planning and zoning recommendation, then staff again should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the project.
What's the planned finish date for this project, this portion?
It will be like January of '23.
And, and what's left after this? Just Aspen, then?
You mean in terms of the rest of the phases of construction? So this will be, there's only interior work done on Aspen. There's going to be no exterior, so you will not see anything brought to the board for Aspen. We will be back this year next time with Elementary North, and that would be the only other building that would have some outside...
Which building?
Elementary North.
Yeah, I agree.
That's the last one.
So pretty much every school and a new school got touched with the referendum?
Everybody got touched, yes, but not necessarily exteriorly or added on to. Everybody, like...
So everybody's getting something?
Everybody's getting something. You got it. You got it.
Now...
I like the way they said that.
Who's in charge of working out the developer donation that you're going to need from Mundaline? The 224 townhome units that are being built at the old Menard Hobby Lobby spot? Who's, who's charged with that?
I will definitely look into that more and get back to you.
You don't have to get back to me. Just get the money.
Money, yeah, from the, from the developer donations, correct.
Well, now, and do you know if Mundaline has...
We have not had those conversations.
No, do you know that they, they, for years and decades, they didn't have a true developer donation? Is that accurate? I asked Kevin to make the phone call. Did you get any answer, Kevin?
Well, I got a first answer. I, I think the good news in Dr. Hannigan's here, but the, the property is actually not in Hawthorne 73.
Oh.
It's in Diamond Lake School District and Stevenson High School, so... It's in Diamond Lake School District and Stevenson High School, so...
So that's been determined, all of it?
What about the cross?
Well, then it's good news.
Oh, yeah, 73 doesn't go that far, that far west on that side of 60.
What part of the cross from there?
That's why I called you, Doc.
North side of 60, where they're looking at the development there.
Which one?
It's the breaking ground there, and they're, I think it's...
Across from Oak Creek?
Yeah, it's office buildings and stuff, it's right next to...
Yeah, but I think that's all outside District 73.
But that's commercial stuff?
Yeah.
Well, you don't care, get, you're going to get the money there, right?
Yeah, but the only thing in that general area west of 60 that District 73 has is the park and Lakewood Homes and that.
All right, well, that's wonderful. So we got a motion and a second?
I had one other comment. As somebody who works in this building on a fairly regular basis, this is a great addition because it's going to move the, especially move the chorus out of the cafeteria and multipurpose gym and move them into an actual music room. That's going to be a significant improvement for the music department there. I just wish there was some more gym space involved in this, but that's just a personal thing.
Did you notice the windows that look like piano keys? Did you notice that?
Yeah.
Nice.
Sorry.
Where are they at, in this picture here?
Yeah, so we'll go back.
So it's your idea, guitar player.
So see how the black keys?
Yeah.
The black keys look like...
I mean, in this picture I'm looking at?
Yeah.
See the two?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Imagine a piano and the black keys, then you have the two, the three, so...
Pretty slick.
C sharp, B sharp, right.
Now, and is, I got one question on this general contractor. Does Leggett have an ownership interest in Lamp?
No, they're separate entities.
Are they really?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, that's all right, I'm just asking.
No conflict of interest?
None.
You're a Leggett guy?
They're Leggett guys.
Oh, hats the mask.
I don't mind, but yes.
But you're a Leggett lady?
They're both Leggett, this is Kristen and Ted, both from Leggett, we don't have any representation.
Yeah, you're Taylor?
And I'm Leanne Taylor from the district, yes.
Okay, and then that's Pete Hannigan back there?
That's my boss back there in the corner.
He's hiding on us.
Hiding on you, yeah.
Smart man.
I drove by the dual-language school, I was glad to see that there was a nice line. Hey, what are you going to do? But my darling granddaughter is on the bus.
Yay!
Yeah, you know, guys, she got over it. The one day, it was panic central.
I know, I know.
Oh, my God, you know, I thought, she's been abducted. You know, well, if you heard the, you know...
It was a lot.
The family, you know.
You what?
Anyway, all right, so we got a roll call.
Do we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, he had a motion as a regular.
Motion, motion approve the new renovations, Middle School South for 73.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, roll call, Liz.
Trustee Markward.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka. President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. I'll have a good time getting it built. Okay. Next is Hawthorne 2.0 plus...
No, no.
No?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, no. It's Hawthorne Row Phase 2. And I know we have Vicky Lee here, and then we have Michelle. What's your first?
John.
John, I wanted to call you Al because I was in the Knights of Columbus with a guy named Al Michelle. Didn't spell it the same way. Okay, John, and who else is here?
We've got Andy Henon and Daniel Grove with Kimley Horn.
Yeah.
Blake Berger, who's with Vicky at Focus.
Okay.
And Andy Chakowski with SKNI, one of our architects.
Yeah.
Some of our other architects got held up on COVID. But we have enough to make a robust conceptual presentation.
Far out, okay. Centennial Real Estate Focus Atlantic Residential Concept Presentation for the redevelopment of the former Carson's parcel at Hawthorne Mall. Okay, you've got it.
Okay. Do I need to state my name?
Yeah, sure.
John Michelle, I'm Senior Vice President of Development with Centennial. Been before you all a number of times over the last two and a half years, and I am extremely excited to be here tonight. Thank you, thank you for having us back. Tonight, we're here to propose a, to discuss our evolving vision of the Hawthorne Mall campus and a revision of the Phase 2 multifamily component of the campus. We're intending to unveil our vision for the continuation of the under-construction mixed-use Phase 1 project by proposing a move of the in-place entitlement for 250 units on the southeastern parking lot to the former Carson's location. So we are talking about this location tonight, the former, or the in-place entitlement is for this location. And what we are specifically talking about is moving the entitlement for the units, not adding to the entitlement. In addition to the, in addition to moving the previously entitled units, we're seeking to build additional ground-level retail underneath the multifamily project to open up the mall by extending the plaza and outdoor areas, relocating Dave and Buster's to a concentrated entertainment wing of the property, and to repurpose an additional 30,000 square feet to outward-facing retail utilizing the plaza. These are all very intentional moves to right-size the interior of the mall, to reinvest in the retail by creating outward-facing retail, taking advantage of tenant demand for this sort of space. Additionally, by compressing the inside of the mall, we will right-size the inside, allowing us to adapt for the shrinking universe of mall tenants and to create a robust retail environment inside the property. Finally, doing all this allows us to fully activate and utilize the plaza quicker. As we unveil this plan to the board tonight, I want to acknowledge that this is the first step to taking the next step. As you know, this is a concept presentation to articulate our thinking and to make sure that stakeholders are on the same page with us moving forward. And to that end, we want to acknowledge that we have a lot of work left to do, a lot of planning to refine, and of course, we'll have to renegotiate and update the redevelopment agreement to reflect these moving pieces. With that, I would like to reintroduce Vicky Lee with Focus Development and let her introduce the team. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board members. Once again, my name is Vicky Lee, Vice President of Focus Development. For those of you who don't know, Focus is both a developer and general contractor, and our partners, Atlantic Residential, is both a developer and property manager. Together, Focus and Atlantic have built over seven projects, two of which are the Atworth and the Phase 1 Hawthorne Row. And at Focus, our motto is that we like to create spaces for people to experience a better life. So when we saw this plan from Centennial, we thought that this was great. This was more exciting than what we have showed you before. One, because it engages all of the retail patrons, it activates the space, and it calls out to the community members to come to this space. And our thought was, if we are to make this plan complete and whole, why build Phase 2 where it used to be, which is here? So this was the previously entitled Phase 2. Above that is the currently under-construction Phase 1. Our proposal is to take this Phase 2, not exactly copy and paste it, but to move it essentially to here. That way, this plaza that we're proposing will feel complete, will call people to come here and be a part of this retail experience. Tonight, we have with us our entire, almost our entire consultant team, Kimley Horn and SKNI, 505 Design unfortunately couldn't be with us, and Clark Condon will be our landscape architect. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Andy Chakowski of SKNI, who previously designed the Atworth for us, to come up and talk about the architecture.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andy Chakowski, architect with SKNI. Again, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Last time I was here, we were discussing the Atworth at Melody Farm, which I think has turned out, you know, fantastic. So here in this image on the screen, you can see Phase 1, which is currently under-construction in the background with the bridge. The Phase 2, which we're discussing, is on the right. You can see sort of the street-lined retail and sort of the interior courtyard, which is elevated above the parking. And then on the left is the redeveloped mall. And in the middle is this grand-new public space that's going to be a wonderful and fantastic addition, an outdoor room, you know, flanked on three sides with street-level retail and residential above on floors, you know, three and four on two of the buildings. And then the revitalized mall and Dave and Buster's and that whole wing on the left. You know, this is essentially a tremendous transformation opportunity here for you guys and your community, and we're really excited to be a part of it. In terms of the building and the architecture we're specifically working on with Focus, here's another view looking from the north, looking across this great new public space. Phase 1 is on the left, the mall is on the right, and the building that we're talking about is sort of in the beyond. And what's, we kind of consider this building a composite building, and essentially what that does, it's sort of like an urban placemaker, if you will. So this building is a four-sided building. The idea here is that the north side, the side that faces the plaza, has a couple of different readings. There's a corner pavilion with all the ground-floor retail, and then this brick-and-panel building that extends to the west that turns and wraps the corner. And essentially, that northern piece holds the plaza and frames the plaza. And then as it extends to the south, if you go back to the plan, you can see essentially those fingers on the south side that turn, transform, the building sort of transforms into more of a residential character with the fingers and the courtyards to really create all this green wonderful space for the residents to live and face, you know, courtyards and landscape instead of parking lot. So this is a really wonderful transformation project for the community.
So the white outline back to here, is that it, those are going to be the next series?
Yeah, exactly. So the two outlined pieces in red, and John can speak to that, are the portions of the mall that will be demolished, the Carson's and the wing of the mall.
And that'll allow a drive to go through there, it looks like?
Yeah, can we pull up the site plan?
Yeah, there you go, exactly. So this is, yeah, this will be the final, the vision of the place. So there's a road, there's a new road that will wrap all the way around this new Phase 2. That road will be, you know, sort of a nice retail centric road with parking on both sides, streetscape, landscaped sidewalks in front of the retail, the buffer between the road and the retail, and then this wonderful new park that will be enclosed on all three sides by the Phase 1, the Phase 2, and the mall.
So Dave and Buster's and AMC will basically lose any visibility to Route 60, correct?
No, actually, they get more visibility, I would say, in their frame.
With this building in front of it?
How do they get more?
How's that going to get more?
Because we're creating these corridors.
No, but if you're looking at, that building is directly towards Route, between, that building is absolutely directly between Route 60 and Dave and Buster's.
The one to your right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the road...
You're talking the building is going to go in front of Carson's?
Yeah.
No, the Carson's is going to be demolished.
What I'm saying is if you're looking at, yeah, looking at this drawing, looking at this drawing that you've got right here, if I'm down here along Route 60, I have the phase, between the Phase 1 and the Phase 2, I don't get to see anything of Dave and Buster's until I get to about where it says future development area there. Otherwise, that whole area to the straight south side of this building, where that little white arrow is, anybody in that stretch along 60 is not going to see anything.
I think you're right, it will diminish the visibility from 60, and AMC gets blocked in certain ways. Those are concepts that our retail partners are okay with.
They are okay.
They see the benefit of this plan as it relates to the overall circulation of the project and the enhancement of the activity at the project.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, it's a fair comment.
Otherwise, your whole point of making this more of a venue to come to, I, 100%.
Fair comment.
Right.
Yeah. I may have the topography in my head, because I know that AMC is up on a hill, so it is above, it is above our building, so...
And to add to that, what we're doing is creating out-facing retail, so this blue-dashed area will all be open to the public, and so to that sense, patrons of the retail are able to sit there and interact with Dave and Buster's and be more a part of that experience.
And is the bench shell that you had proposed earlier back over to the right near where you've got Dave and Buster parking now, is that?
That is not yet drawn into the plan at this point, so...
But it will still probably...
Yes.
Still probably, okay.
What happens with Phase 3 as the proposed senior living center?
Phase 3 is running through its own entitlement tract, and we're not proposing any change as part of this plan. So that, we are intending or hoping that that matriculates and is approved, and it is an independent application, although it is part of an overall campus plan.
So what does this new proposal do to the outlots along Milwaukee and 60? There were originally, how many?
There was originally about five acres, there's still five acres. This road is in the same place as it was built, no change to this out parcel. It extends the depth of this out parcel, the current road bows in like this, so it creates some additional development area, particularly for right here.
And is there any increase in the number of residential units by doing this?
There will not be an increase, we will simply be transferring the number of units from the previously Phase 2 to this Phase 2.
Yeah, I'm just kind of going down my list if it's okay with everyone. And you're increasing green space with this?
I'm sorry?
This is an increase in green space from the previous?
The plaza area is getting substantially larger, yes.
I just wonder if that parking, that parking to the south, the southeast, that large parking area, yeah, that would be...
Why is it that you, why didn't you just keep the building where it was and just put more of these outlots where the Phase 2 mixed-use was, but keep all the resident where that parking lot is to the right there? Because now people, if they want to go to sort of the south side of the mall, if the southwest lot is full, they've got to park all the way by Uncle Julio's instead of right where it says Phase 2 mixed-use right there, instead of just parking there.
The thing that we didn't articulate is that there is parking for the retail in the Phase 2 mixed-use garage. Approximately 200 spaces will be for retail users.
For retail, okay, not just for residence?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you're making a great point.
Yeah.
It's a fine line between densifying and making it accessible, and we've taken a lot of care, and our retail partners require that we do to make sure that there's adequate parking.
Right, right.
Yeah, because I don't see a whole lot of people parking...
Yeah, they're not going to park by Uncle Julio's and walk all the way over there, they would go somewhere else.
So in the Phase 2 mixed-use building, between for residents and then chappers, how many parking spaces will it be in, under the building?
200 for retail, and then, 200 spaces for retail dedicated, and then the parking ratio is approx, I think it's 1.5 per unit for the...
How many for residential?
250 times 1.5.
300.
So there's 450.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
Yes.
Okay, well...
Yeah, so how many spaces were there in that lot just when it was just a plain lot, do you know?
The Carson's lot?
Yeah, the Carson's lot.
Don't know that off the top of my head. But the overall ratio?
I don't have that number either, but from a retail perspective, it's, Carson's is 100,000 square feet, I mean, and that's gone, so we're replacing that with more quality leasable space that's approximately, what, 30,000 square feet, Sean? So the parking demand comes down with this development.
Sure, sure.
And just to be clear, the 200 spaces that are in this garage includes enough of a space, parking space ratio, not only for the retail that we're building, but and then for across the plaza and the retail across the street, because we're envisioning people who will want to park here to go across the plaza through the retail that's on... Because we're envisioning people who will want to park here to go across the plaza through the retail that's under Dave and Buster's.
Okay, so, so the parking is what, above, on ground level and above?
Yes.
And how many levels?
Four levels, five including the roof.
But the retail's only on the ground and the second.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so what is that exterior elevation going to look like? Is there a picture?
Of the garage? You won't see the garage. It'll be wrapped around by the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have an elevation from looking 60 north?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an elevation on 60 looking north? Basically, the south elevation, but looking north?
No.
No.
Because that would be help, Tom, help us look at Dave and Buster's and, you know.
We do not directly, but this view, and keep in mind, this is still in flux and under consideration by the ownership. But this view is from 60 essentially. So if you go back to the plan.
So from 60, you can't really see Dave and Buster's or the mall or.
So the left side here is the left.
Yeah, but if Dave and Buster's is okay with that, you know.
Well, what's interesting with Dave and Buster's, if you're, if you're on the Ring Road circling from Milwaukee back to 60, is that what I see on these drawings conceptualized, it's going to be an upper level that's going to say Dave and Buster's?
Yeah.
On the building?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Well, that's, if you can't see that.
Well, when you're in the project, it's going to be extremely prominent. Yes.
I know where it's at, Tom.
But you can't see it from anything except this road.
Okay, well, so you can't see AMC either?
Yeah, you can see AMC from Ring and from.
From 60?
Not from 60, no.
No.
But from Ring Road and 21.
Well, that's the same thing with this.
No, you're not going to see it from any roadway.
Oh, you mean Dave and Buster's?
Right.
The second floors?
Right.
Right, because you've got, you've got a four-story building in front of it. See that, see the, the only place you'll see it from is right in that streetscape there. You will not see it from 60 or from Milwaukee Avenue.
I know you're not going to see it from 60. So to Ring Road, you won't see it?
Because that's act behind the buildings.
During, I mean, in certain corridors, when you're approaching down Hawthorne Row, it's going to be, you know, the main thing that your eye is drawn to.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think there's some trades for sure with visibility.
Trade off. But, but if they're fine with that, I'm, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're also, I mean, I don't want to miss the point that, you know, we're transitioning this from, you know, a, a, a retail centered mall, which it will still be, but now we're adding residents who will be there 24/7.
Understood, yeah.
You know, so it has a different, a transitional character as well.
Yeah.
What were your readings?
Or is there still going to be, wait, will there still be a front entrance for Dave and Buster's from the mall?
The primary entrance from Dave and Buster's is going to be here on the second level outside.
Okay, so if I pull up to, will you be able to enter from a street level location like you can now? Or it'll just be one entrance into the thing?
Well, the parking lot is, this is at the grade level. The upper grade level feeds into the front door.
So there's only one way in?
There's one front door, which is their preference.
So you can't, but you can walk into the mall?
You can walk into the mall from here and from behind the.
Right.
From behind Dave and Buster's.
Again, if I might, is there any entrance at all, you know, from 60 to Dave and Buster's like there is now? That's all?
No.
No.
Okay.
Are, is, but are you able to enter from, when you were talking about earlier, from those other stores? Are they connected in any way in the back that you could get up there? I mean, is that?
Up, up here?
Yeah, that stuff along there.
This is all Dave and Buster's on the top. This is retail on the ground. The upper level lot, the AMC lot.
Right, right.
Is how you're going to access.
No, what I was asking is there, is there, there, there is no access to, I mean, those stores, when you go into those stores, all you'll be accessing is those stores. There is no back.
Is there an entrance to the mall from the back of those stores?
You, no, you cannot. No, because the stores are one-sided, so the front door is this way. The stores don't want to have people walking out the back door.
That's what I was checking.
Really, they don't? I would think they would want people from the mall side going into those.
Again, we're, we're targeting retailers who want to be outside. So some retailers want to be outside, some want to be inside. The market has shifted from 400,000 square foot enclosed mall to a 250,000 square foot of shop enclosed mall. And that's what this is seeking.
I was just thinking, I was just at Block 37 in the city a few days ago, and they have, you know, access from, from State Street into all those shops there. And also interior, you can get into those same shops.
There are definitely situations where retailers will like that.
Yeah.
Specifically not in suburban locations.
And a lot of retailers are understaffed to be able to provide enough security for dual entrances. And so if they had a choice, I think they would choose the, the outward facing.
What did you guys gain from this? Like, by moving this, what were your gains? And what did you give up by moving it to where?
So I think the, the primary gain is that we have completely activated the plaza. We finished the project. So if we built the plaza and then figured out what we were going to do after on the Carsons building, we were going to have to change the integrity of it. So we are rightsizing the mall, we're bracketing the plaza and creating a.
Well, how many units will be in the building that's now going to be in the Carsons, you know, in front of the Carsons? What, the new building?
It'll be the same 250, so we're not gaining units at all.
Okay, 250, just like the building that's going up now?
The building that's going up now is 311.
That's 200, right?
No, that's 3.
It's 311.
313, I think.
But that's two buildings.
Correct.
Technically.
Because one building's 113.
Correct.
Yeah.
And one's 200.
Right.
Correct.
So you're adding another 250 to that total.
Yes.
So it'll be 550.
Yes.
Which was the original number, yeah.
Well, so be it. Well, the original number was about 313.
No.
No.
No, 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 stop, Tom. We weren't doing this building until a couple, a month and a half ago.
No, 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 this was.
With Carsons, it wasn't always planned that way.
Yeah, no, but the phase, this is the original Phase Two just moved over. It was on the original plan, but it was over to the right.
It's moved west, yeah.
Yeah, with this, where that parking lot is, yeah, it was originally there.
Okay.
On the original plan. This is just moving that.
Unit here as our Phase Two, and we're taking that entitlement, and now we're calling Phase Two.
Yeah, the original plan was 550.
So what, what are you going to do with that lot then?
We're, we're studying that, and we're not prepared to bring.
No townhouses.
We're not going to do townhouses.
We're not doing.
There you go.
We're evaluating that.
You got the doctor, the school district there.
Primarily, we, we have to deal with the DOT on that topic. The DOT, there's transportation issues associated with building this to more density. So that's something that we are planning to study after we get through this round of permitting entitlement.
Is this, are they, they're both in the TIF, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think they're separate parcels, if I'm correct.
You are correct.
These areas, and they're both within the TIF.
You are correct.
Right?
Yes.
Still not sure why, why there's an advantage of, of, of moving that, that over versus just putting more green space and having more retail.
I'll try to answer it in a different way. I mean, if we built this and Carsons was there vacant, you would have a vacant Carsons and.
Why not still just tear down Carsons and then just?
Well, we need to plan to build something back when we tear it down. So this is sort of speeding the answer up would be the best way to think about it. And it's also, it's also bringing the mass inside the project, which is good for the retail, and it's also good for the residents.
Yeah, that's the thing I kind of like about it, is that it, it brings that, that portion that was kind of residential out, away from everything, back in more to be part of the whole project.
Residential project right here doesn't do as much for the mall as what we're proposing. What we're proposing is surgery on the mall to fix the mall, whereas this would be surgery on the outside of the mall, and we would still have to do.
Where, in, in the old plan, where was there retail on Phase Two?
There was no retail on the previously approved Phase Two. But we decided to put retail on this new Phase Two because that would create the space, the retail space on that plaza, to make it complete. Because if you imagine, if we'd had residential units fronting the plaza, it wouldn't be as active as if we had restaurants and seating out here really creating and engaging and making a place out of this plaza.
How large are those retail spots in the bottom? What is?
Total square footage of this area in pink is about 28,000 square feet. So there'll be additional small shops that would extend the Phase One.
That's where I look at. You're putting smaller shops that can afford, instead of having a bigger space. So, yeah, that's.
There aren't bigger retailers that exist anymore. And that, you know, we're, we're reacting to the market in a way that we think is fantastic.
I agree.
You know, I do like how it spreads the new stuff out a little bit more versus keeping condensed. Because when you drive by and you envision like where the new stuff's going, and you're still looking at the bland looking mall, no offense, to what it is now. And this, now, you're kind of covering it up a little bit from the road, but you're going to enhance it once you get in.
Yeah.
And you're taking some of the, like, Carsons out of there too. So it, at the surface, I mean, it, it definitely kind of creates more of a enticing place to go. And if you figure out what you're doing in that southeast portion of that lot, instead of putting up more, anything that's more than two stories, you're going to take away from it. So I mean, I don't know what you guys are planning, but is this just going to be parking? Is there going to be enough parking here?
There's enough parking.
This is on the lower level, right? On this side? So you only have the parking, the 200 in the mixed use, and then the parking outside of, here on the Macy's side. If this stays as parking, if you even build something in that southeast, people are going to have to do quite a lot of walking to get to the new stuff. So I'm not sure.
There's, there is enough parking from a ratio standpoint when we.
What are the ratios during the holiday season and during the hot summer season when everybody's outside?
I mean, I, I, the ratio is a static ratio. How much of the parking lot is utilized is, is what you're asking. Right now, it's sort of hard to evaluate because it's an unhealthy retail environment, so it's not utilized. But the ratio always stays above 4.0.
So your ratio comparison is Melody Farms across the street?
Which is.
You've seen it.
I mean, but, 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 you know.
Would you say that would be under, less, do you think they need more parking there, more space for parking there?
It's a balancing act between making sure it's activated and not desolate and making sure it's safe and that people can park, so.
So based on your observations on the current market, when you go over there, do you feel like, hey, this could have been worked out a little bit better?
I think there's always enough parking, but I think that sometimes you have to walk further than you're accustomed to.
As long as there's enough ADA parking by the green space here.
Definitely there will be.
Versus having them walk, yeah.
So, so what, it, the true inline stores, how many square feet is going to be left when we're done with the, all of this? You still have Penny's and Macy's, but the inlines.
When you say inline, do you mean inside the mall?
I don't mean Macy's, and I don't mean Penny's.
So the total mall, the total square footage of this project is 950,000. Macy's and Penny equal about 400,000.
Of that.
Of that. So that, there will be about 550,000. That includes things like AMC, it includes things like PGA. So the statistics move around based on the specific question.
Now, where's PGA at?
It's over, it's over on the outside of the Ring Road.
Not, not on the plan.
You mean where it is now?
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, the statistics, there's a lot of ways to ask the question. I have, I have the statistic.
That's okay, you don't have to clarify it that much. I just want to know underneath the roof, the, the people, what was the old mall? Not, not, not with Penny's, not with Macy's, about 400 square feet?
Small shop was about 400,000, and there'll be about 270,000 left. I mean, that, that's another way to say it. Under the roof of the mall. Four, there were, there was 400,000 square feet. We're demolishing about 130,000 feet.
And you're moving it outside between the various lots?
And we're, we're turning it inside out here, we're adding.
And then if you had Macy's and Penny's, it's, it bumps it up to what, about 700,000?
More, more like 900,000.
All right, well, yeah, it's okay, I mean.
But you get the concept of whoever wants to be in, whoever wants to be out.
Yeah.
Well, I think, and, and, you know, if you go through the mall, unfortunately, you know, less people want to be in than ever. And when you go through Melody Farms, you see people want to be out, and more people want to be out. So we want to accommodate both to maximize the potential.
I agree.
Yeah, well, this is, you know, what we knew we were getting involved in three, four years ago, you know? I mean, this is, this is, you know, different and in a good way.
Well, and, and I personally, I come back to, I think the biggest plus to this is, is, again, what Trusty Shank was talking about in that, and moving it, you know, closer is going to make it more inviting and, and more, you know, appealing to, to actually be there. Again, also, the added amount of green space and like park space in that is, is really a good thing.
It's a huge commitment by both of our firms to the green space, to the community activation. Both firms spend a lot of time working together. We work with our consultants interchangeably. We have more consultants who didn't come. We've spent a lot of time thinking about this, refining it, and we're really, really excited about it. We think it's going to be dynamite.
Plus, there's a large new cash infusion.
Very large.
I know. In addition to the 250. And I won't say what it is, but Steve told me.
It, it's a very, very large investment by both of our firms and by our equity partner, who is the equity partner in all both of our deals together. We're completely, you know, committed to the village and to this project, and this is a double down. It, it's not, it's not a get out, it's not, we're not trying to get out of it. We're, we're in here for, we've been here since 2015. We're, we're going to be here building this for a long time. We've, we've shown you through the pandemic. We started this project. We're continuing, and, you know, I, I, I mean, it, it's a.
Will the Vegas, you know, retail conference be on this year?
Well, actually, we had a, a Vegas conference in December, which took the place of the typically scheduled New York conference, and there is.
No, I'm talking about the one.
The spring, the spring conference is scheduled in May, yes. And we had a mini version of it right before Christmas.
Okay.
Can I ask, in, in Phase Two, there is the new retail just on the north side? Or does it wrap around to the west side there?
You can see in pink, where it's highlighted in pink, so it does wrap around.
Part of the way. Is it on the east side at all, or it's just a north, it's just a north and west?
Just on the north and west. On this east side is the residential lobby.
Okay. And where, where's the exit from the parking lot? Is, is there, is there a walkthrough where it looks like there's retail?
Yeah, it doesn't show well on this plan. There is a walkthrough.
Is it where it's yellow there maybe, or?
Yeah, that indicates that it's home and family above.
And there's no retail at the ground level because it's a Passaic.
Okay, so that's, that's the walkthrough right through the?
Correct.
All right, do we, do we have any more comments or questions on this? Because it's eventually just going to go to technical review, and.
Right.
Then the damage will be done on both sides, you know?
Mr. President, if I may, as Mr. Michelle said early on, we'll, we'll take, our staff will work with John's team to take a look at the RDA and to look at rightsizing the RDA to assess these changes. We're really not sure of the changes right now into the retail.
Right.
The increment, the project budget. So we'll work with the developer's team to renegotiate, take a look at the RDA once this is all moving forward.
Okay. I, you know, personally, this is, you know, this is going to turn out probably better than what I know I envisioned because it's, it's kind of being expanded and what next, Penny's?
You know, there's more, I, we're not, we don't have a plan for more, but, but this, you know, isn't the end, and it's going to get better. I think this is, this is getting better. This is us of, you know, reacting to both the success of Phase One.
What?
And in talking to Steve, it's getting a lot better.
What does the facade look like on, on, I guess, the retail south of Phase One? I don't know if that's still Phase One or if that's Phase Two. I guess it's Phase One, the south side of Phase One. What's, what's the, the back of that look like now? Because previously it was residential.
Are you talking about this building?
Yeah, that building right there. What does it look like?
But we, we actually, at Mike Atkinson's request, designed that to look like the exterior of a building, to be a four-sided building or a two-sided building. So it is intended to stand up to exactly what you're saying, thanks to Mike.
Yeah, it was, there was a lot of conversation about that. So that was designed, assuming phase two never happened. We didn't want to get caught with an exterior finish that would have amounted to a front facade facing a town line to look like anything but a front facade.
But a front facade, yeah.
So that'll look fine. It'll look finished like all the other sides of the building.
And real, I mean, it was really a good point that Mike brought up, you know, during those conversations and we agreed and we're executing that.
Yeah, and what, what's, how many floors is the smaller building?
It's the same four floors.
Yeah. And, and there's, is there two, two levels of retail?
On the, yeah, there are.
Yeah. So that in itself is different than the first building? Or is there two levels there, too?
There's two level, there's two.
Well, the retail's one level, right?
No, for the first, the, the 200 plus unit building.
The retail is one level, two-story, two-story height.
Okay. So is that the pyramid construction?
The pyramid what?
That's what I was told by somebody in your firm.
Podium.
Podium.
Oh, podium.
Podium. Is that it? Podium?
Podium.
Yeah, so that, is it, either of those buildings podium type?
They are. It's wood frame for the residential units over concrete.
Yeah, and that's the same for this new second phase building out in front of Carson's.
Correct.
Yeah. It gives you the flexibility for the retail and the parking and then the wood goes on top of it.
Okay. The original plan, we never brought forward. So we're bringing this forward and to me, phase one turns over in the.
This, end of this year, the first phase.
So it's pushed, it's pushed now, obviously, I'm assuming.
No, the phase one is still.
No, it, it's not the end of, it's not the end of this year. It's, it's the.
The first phase of phase one turns over the end of this year.
It, it's going to open?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I recall that we were on the August timeframe at some point, an hour later?
No, we're, we're definitely on the schedule and the intention would be to bring this out of the ground so that it starts to lease when phase one's fully absorbed. So I don't think we've lost any time. We, we're on our original aggressive schedule.
So right now in your schedule, when will phase two be complete, when tenants are moving into the commercial and people are walking around in the green space? Would you say?
Approximately two years from next.
Dates?
January, January of 2020.
Five.
Five. Two year, takes two years to build, so we're a year away from starting to build it because we need to entitle it and permit it, et cetera.
Three years away till completed through phase two.
I'd say so, yeah.
So i- in essence, the, the amount of retail space, when it's all said and done, say, Penny's and Macy's are still here, what will it total out to? Over, over a million square feet then?
Say just under a million square feet, around.
Including, I'm talking inline stores.
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking Macy's and I'm talking Penny's.
It's close to a million square feet.
That is.
The whole thing.
Okay, including what we're discussing here.
Yes.
It, it, the first floor, second floor retail in these new buildings.
Total retail space around a million square.
And now, who's done the prospectus and how mu- how many sales dollars will be produced per hundred square feet or whatever the formula is, you know, with what we're going to wind up with long term?
I do not have that at my fingertips.
But what's a good number? A decent number?
Sales per square foot?
Yeah.
500 a foot?
Okay, and we're not anywhere close to that right now. Yeah, okay.
You almost.
But maybe we'll get there.
That, that's what we hope.
Okay. Apple Store, roll the dice.
And that is, I mean, that, that's, you know, what, what our vision is.
Okay.
I think Apple Store will be excited about this.
That's good. What, well, with the, okay, anything else that the board wants to discuss with the petitioners here today?
I like it.
Any news on restaurants on Milwaukee?
There's a lot of news. That we're not quite ready to announce, but there's a lot of activity. Our leasing people are very busy.
Because if you haven't settled all three of them, I just happened to eat at Bonefish Sunday night and I'd still like them in town.
Noted.
I couldn't help it. It just happened to be Sunday night and I was thinking about this coming up and I went, oh, yeah.
So the retail on, in phase one there on the south part, as we just discussed, is two, four-sided, but the entrances will still only be from, from the main road there and from the west. There's no back entrances to those buildings.
Correct. But there's a paseo, there's a paseo, so there's a way to walk from the lot, to shortcut the lot right here.
Yeah.
And, and is there still residential above those?
Yes.
You know, and I'd like.
And you still feel as though it's better to do that versus having the big garage in that lot there with the paseo and, and, and leaving where it says phase two mixed use as just a, a, a ground floor parking lot with a, with a walk through there?
I think it's better for the plaza and for the activation of the existing retail. If, if it was just open, it would be harder to correct, to bring the, bring the existing retail to where we want it to go. Absolutely.
Yes.
And I got, I got one last revenue question. With the improvements, I guess, to, I don't know, Dave and Buster's, are they actually expanding the 40,000 square feet or no?
No, no.
Okay. And then, and the theater's the theater?
Theater's staying.
Okay. And I'll ask Lori this. You, you with me, Lori? Good. What are we generating out of Dave and Buster's right now in the amusement tax and also AMC Theater?
AMC Theater and the other one?
What did you say?
Dave and Buster's.
Dave and Buster's.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have the answer to that question.
No, it's all right. We'll get it, okay?
I will give that to you.
Yeah, give it to Kevin and.
Okay.
Get it distributed. Is there anything else over there that's, that's a true amusement tax generator? Or just those two locations? Okay. And then let, let me know too, village-wide, what do we generate in amusement tax annually?
Okay.
Okay? All right. I don't have any more questions. I don't know.
So where is that ban show kind of gazebo going to go?
Well, we have a lot of room on that plaza. So thi- this is not fully designed. It's conceptually designed. We're working with our landscape architects to refine this design. And when we come back, assuming that you want to see us back, we'll, we'll be showing you exactly where that goes, but speculating it, this plan view is not, not.
One of the things in the original drawing that I liked was the fact that you were able to put that sort of terrace-type seating up the, you know, up that side, you know, back over and, and I worried about with the Dave and Buster's parking and that there. That's upper level and, and, yeah, that terrace-style seating that you had in the original, original one scale, in fact, the picture that you guys have put out there for people to see when they're up on the level looking down on the project.
It's actually going to get more dramatic and you can see the stairs are still in here. We're, we're looking at building a restaurant into the grade with a rooftop bar, looking down. So I think as we refine the drawing, you'll see that we've adhered to the original vision and really enhanced it.
Well, because I noticed you guys added that drawing up there if you're, if you're up on the upper level, back at the corner there where you overlook the whole project, you put that drawing in that showed the, the terrace seating coming back up to that and the, and the ban show and all that. And that, that was just a really, really nice, you know, location and city. Yeah, the original, yeah.
I saw a real nice one last summer in, I think it was a town called Willmette. You ever been there, to that whole park system?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty impressive. An outdoor kind of amphitheater. I'm not saying that's pretty good size. I, I don't think you would do something like that here, but you might have it terraced.
Well, all, all of these ideas are consistent with our original vision and they're intended to be part of our next version of that vision. We're not attempting to deviate. I look at this as enhancements and we will be showing you a refined final version of this or proposed final version of this as we get closer.
Okay. Jim Parolo, you want to do the speech?
Certainly, certainly. You've heard the speech before, but tonight's concept review, if allowed to move forward, is not a formal approval of the modified project, nor is it a guarantee of future approvals. Tonight was an opportunity to receive comments from the board, which you have received. If the consensus is such, you will move forward to technical review to get further comments regarding your plans. Your plans will then be revised to appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing. Ultimately, you'll end up back here before the committee of the hall with the hopes to get to the village board for final approval. So the, the main point of that is it's not a formal approval. It's a, it's a go-ahead to, to move forward if, if that's what's allowed. So, Mr. President, tonight, I don't think we need a motion, but if you can pull the board and gain a consensus as to whether or not the concept can move forward to technical review with the understanding that the redevelopment agreement will be amended as appropriate to address the changes in the project.
All right. Trusty Forrester, you want this to go forward?
Yeah.
Trusty Appenheim?
I do, but I have one more question, if you may allow. So say someone is, I'm looking at the picture that's up here. So right from this perspective, sort of southeast of the plaza, is the only way to get inside the mall where that mall entry, the big mall entry is, or up on the second floor where Dave and Buster's? Or is there any other mall entry sort of on, on first floor southeast?
That's the primary mall entry. These are outward-facing shops, so that's a way in. This is a way in from the upper level lot behind Dave and Buster's? But that, that's not where you're specifically asking.
Well, I, I sort of am, but, but imagine someone is across the street here but wants to get inside of the mall southeast. Previously, there was a, you know, a Dave and Buster's entrance and there was a Sears entrance or whatever. Now you have to walk all the way over to the mall entry side. I was just wondering if, if there were any openings to the interior of the mall instead of, of all those shops or, or any, do you have any small entryways there?
We haven't looked at that. That's something that we can look at. It's, it's a point that nobody has brought up yet and we'll take a look at that. Now, I'm not sure what the answer wants to be, but I see what you're saying for sure.
Yeah, because if you're anywhere on this plaza, if you want to go inside the mall, especially if it's a cold day, you've got to go all the way over to that mall entrance, the big mall entrance, or you've got to go up all of those stairs.
True.
There's no other entrance.
That's true. That's a good question.
Okay. And AMC is losing parking spaces?
Correct.
Because of potentially the senior housing?
The senior housing, we have carved that out of AMC previously, so they're okay with that. So they're losing.
And how many acres is that lot? Is that two, two, three acres?
2.77 acres on the senior housing lot?
Oh, okay.
I can tell you every time I turn off Milwaukee Avenue onto Ring Drive, I become less enamored of this phase three. To the point where I am at a point where I don't.
Yeah, you mean including the senior?
Yeah.
Senior.
Yeah, I just, I gotta be upfront with you about that.
I concur.
I concur.
Yeah, every time, every time I drive through that area, I, I just, you know, and I mention it and people I'm with, but I always get the same reaction.
I wasn't, I wasn't here at the meeting. I was out, out of town when you first brought that up, but I, I really was hoping that you would look at the Carson's Furniture spot there, which is equal in size to that lot since we're talking about phase three.
And I appreciate those comments and I would like the opportunity to sit with you and with Matt Phillips, the developer from ID2, to articulate why we, why he.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, I'm going to throw cold water on, on the Carson's location right out of the box.
Okay.
So as, in essence, you know, you've got a bunch of people that are, you know, I don't know, probably going to be older than 55 living there. So to get to the mall, you're going to have to walk through a, a busy car parked lot.
I, I get that, but.
You would set them up on a total island there, in my opinion.
Well, I, I get that, but, I mean, I've, I've been to those types of facilities a lot recently, given, you know, my mother-in-law and, and, and a good percentage of the people who'd be living in that building aren't walking across the street. They're not walking across to the mall. So, so I, I think it's really limited number. You can tell me what the number was of more able-bodied people that would be living in that.
I thought it was like 60% were able-bodied.
It's a proposed 162-unit project and over 50% are for active adults. Another 35% are for seniors and then five.
It was a 13 units were.
10%, about 16.
You told us 160 units, 80, 80 individuals, 60 assistant, 20 memory care.
That's right.
In, in October.
Sixty.
So I don't know if that's changed in your proposal, but that's.
No, it hasn't changed.
60 assisted and 20 memory care, so.
Percent. Oh, no.
Unit.
Of the 160 of the units.
Right, so we're talking.
50% would be able to.
50% would be able-bodied, right. And the other 50 aren't going there on their own. So we're talking, we're talking for 80 units blocking the whole entrance, you know, visibility.
I think it's worth talking this through with Matt and with ID2 because, I mean, I think he really, and, I mean, he's the operator. He animates his reason for why that location makes sense. And instinctively, I had the comparable reaction when I first thought about it, but after spending two meetings with him, I completely bought in to his vision and understand why it will make a unique senior housing project, a one-of-a-kind senior housing project that will afford seniors with the ac- with really unparalleled access to amenities feeds both projects really nicely. So, you know, I, I think it would be, I'd be well-served to not try to have, answer these questions without him. And I think we, we would like to sit down with you, spend an hour or two and talk about your concerns and, and some of the reasoning behind why that's looking like that location.
And here's the drawing I was talking about. This is one of your original drawings that, which is how the, this was from the original, original, wait a second, let me.
Right, right, right. That's the plaza looking.
Yeah, 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 this was.
You're going to see very, very similar graphics.